All right, welcome back, everyone. We are done with our timed items. We will start with our Behavioral Health Services items and our untimed items. So, starting with item number 7.7, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Hard Deep Singh, M.D., to perform substance use disorder treatment medical director responsibilities on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health Services in the amount of $1,819,640 for fiscal year 2425. And we have Director Jones.
Hello. Okay, it's live. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Board. Yes, as I have to just reference the Drug Medicale Organized Delivery System here to set the context for why this is required. So, every Drug Medicale plan must have a medical director, and that physician must review all of the assessments to make sure that they're correct and sign off on them, and also make sure, rule for medical causes, really, that can be very pertinent in an SUD treatment. So, because we joined the Organized Delivery System waiver, a lot of his work is now medicale reimbursable where it hasn't been before, which is very cool. And so, he is able to bill fee for service Drug Medicale for some portions of his work. And so, thus, that's the dramatic increase in his contract as to account for the revenue or his billing of fee for service, which reflects a 65% pass-through of our fee-for-service rate, which we maintain across both mental health and Drug Medicale plans. So, that is the nature of that contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions on the board? Seeing none, just a quick clarification. You said that the medical director is able to do the billing? Or is your department doing the billing? And how do we get refunded for it? I'm just trying to figure out that line.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, it's pretty much like any other contractor. All of our contractors have a direct login to our electronic health record. It's a cloud-based web browser electronic health record where they can only access their patients. So, they submit claims right in our EHR. They also do monthly invoicing, so we reconcile what they bill against their invoice, and we pay them, and then we bill up the claim to DHCS.
Okay, so you're both billing.
Yes.
One to you and you to the state.
That's true.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve agreement between County of Lake and Hard Deep Singh, M.D., to perform substance use disorder treatment medical director responsibilities on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health Services in the amount of $1,819,640 for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Just a quick check-in with C.A.O. Parker. Everything's good to go?
Yes.
Well, you know, it's probably more entertaining for some people, as long as we're still going and we're recording and we're on Zoom. Let's move on to 7.8, consideration of amendment number two to the agreement between County of Lake and Sutter Center for psychiatry for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations in the amount of $300,000 for fiscal year 2324. Director Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I brought this item for a discussion because of two factors. One is that this is a somewhat unusual type of contract whereby we're rendering payment for a previous fiscal year. It's a red flag, for sure, for me. And so, it's good to discuss. And for two, because it's a very high-dollar amount contract. So, the reason why it took us a long time was some just difficulty getting Sutter Center for Psychiatry to sign the agreement and be responsive to reconciling invoices. And so, our analyst team diligently worked through that. And of course, we finally get to close out our fiscal year 2324, which is great. And I don't think we've had like this type of contract since fiscal year 2122. And I don't, we will not be bringing any others. This is the outlier for this year.
All right. Thank you very much. And when you say any others, you mean for fiscal year or in the future as well?
So, we're closing out our 2324 fiscal year, which means for now, we never want these kind of contracts where you're like rendering, but this is our last of the 2324 batch, or maybe the only one. I can't, anyways, we hope to be done with that.
We shall see. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? And just real quick, it's not an increase in cost or fees. This is an increase in services that were rendered to community members. Thank you very much. The answer was yes. Let's open it up for public members. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing no hands up in the Zoom room and no movement in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Further, Chair, I move to approve amendment two to the agreement between County of Lake and Sutter Center for Psychiatry for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations in the amount of $300,000 for fiscal year 202324, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So, we are going to move along on our untimed items to, we're going to start with 7.13, because I believe we have a special guest here for that one. And so, that one is consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services; B, purchase of a 900 Eco 12-yard truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner; and C, authorizing the department head to issue a purchase order to UROCK not to exceed the amount of $653,040. And Director Borre.
Good afternoon, Board, staff, and residents, if there's any. So, this item before you, we did formal bidding, and we had demos of multiple different kind of tractor trucks, pumper trucks. They're all kind of exclusive to each different brand. So, we had AquaTech out, Owens Equipment, Vaccon, and UROCK out. And those were the only ones that we could reach out to to get them to come. And we received quotes for all of them for new models. The bids ranged from $710,000 down to $632,000 for a new piece of equipment. And the UROCK one was, for a brand-new one, was $686. And when they brought out the demo model, it's got all the bells and whistles on it, and comes with a lateral kit and a bunch of stuff that isn't standard on equipment. And they offered us to purchase their demo model at $855,000, sorry, $588,000, which is $100,000 less than the brand-new piece of equipment. And it only has 40 hours on the equipment of operations, which was purely demo. So, it was professionally done by the UROCK representatives. And it has 8,000 miles on the engine, and it's a diesel engine, so it's not even broken. And so, we would like to go with the option of using the demo model and save the county $100,000 for basically the same piece of equipment.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, you just mentioned the D-word as in diesel. Is this one of those heavy pieces of equipment that require that DEF stuff?
Well, I believe it's diesel, but it's, yes, it's all the new diesel equipment kind of stuff that has the, they all come with DEF.
So, you're understanding we're bound to get that type of equipment based on state or federal law?
Yeah, it's the way they come, based on the state. And due to the nature of the size of the equipment, that's what it is.
All right. Well, I mean, I can't hold this up. 100K is 100K, but just based on frequent reports from our good friends at Lakeport Fire, those DEF things can take units out of service for extended periods of time. So, I guess we're going to have to all live and learn with that. So, it's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Or did we have a comment?
I was just here in case he had any questions.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience today. Any comments on this item? Anyone wish to speak to this? I see no hands in Zoom, no movement, though there is slight movement in the chamber. I'll take that as not coming for a question or a comment. I'll bring it back to the board. Director Borre, thank you very much for the correspondence regarding this. Everything looks good to me. Looking forward to the approval.
I move that we waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique natures of goods and services.
We have, do we want to do the whole thing? Can we do the whole thing?
Three-pack, I think.
We do A, B, and C?
Your Board has the option to do it the whole way or the other?
I'll retract my second.
Okay, B, approve, and B, approve purchase of a 900 Eco 12-yard truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner, and C, and authorize the department head to issue a purchase order to UROCK not to exceed the amount of $653,040.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to go backwards to 7.12, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of agreement between the County of Lake on behalf of Lake County Sanitation District, Lake Coast Sand, and Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for Lake Coast Sand Full Circle Effluent Pipeline project update to the 2004 preliminary design report for an amount not to exceed $320,611, and authorize the chair to sign. I don't know why that was difficult, but it was.
Okay. Good afternoon. This item before you is an update. So, they already did the full circle original plan, which takes the effluent from all the different wastewater systems and basically takes the pipeline all the way up to the geysers. So, currently, it goes from our northwest plant to, and Clear Lake Oaks, down to southeast, and then it goes around the, down to Middletown, and then up to the geysers. It currently does not include the city of Lakeport or the Kelseyville plants. And so, this would be updating the 2004 plan to look at new technologies, check the pipeline locations, because the freeway has changed somewhat over the last 20 years, and look at what it would take us. It's a study to look and see where the pipeline would be and what it would be to make that a full circle around the lake.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Just a question. You noted substantial amount of time has passed since the last PDR, and some things are going to change up, like you said, based on design, changing technologies, what have you. But I guess before I want to spend 320K on that, I don't see in this report, again, dating back to 2004, what the initial thought was on the full circle, whether we in this board still agree that that's a good idea. And so, I think I know the circle list. This has been a longstanding goal of this board and prior boards and all that. But I just want to make sure before we spend the money on that, that if there's any renewed authorization, we would need to do that. Same thing, just if conditions have changed on the ground, that would require an update to the PDR, do we need to review whether this is still a good idea as a policy?
This is funded from Congressman Thompson specifically for this purpose.
Yes, it's an earmark that we have. So, it's not our.
We asked for it.
It's not our money. It's the federal government's fund. So, and it's my understanding that we are still interested in looking to see about making the full circle, as well as what the option would be for tertiary and being able to look at those two studies and compare the two options.
Supervisor.
Yeah, I think from, you know, this is an earmark that we asked through for Congressman Thompson. We appreciate getting that opportunity. But also, through the devastating disasters we've had, there are some communities that still aren't on, so we need to look at those because just like we had to rebuild the sewer to rebuild the community of Anderson. We need to look at those because just like we had to rebuild the sewer to rebuild the community of Anderson Springs as we moved through that process, resiliency is a part of this conversation also, so.
And future development.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think that if we don't move forward that and we have growth, we have other issues we have to kind of think about. Where do we put treated water? If we don't continue to do the full circle project. That doesn't mean that we can't have tweaks to it, especially there's upcoming contracts that will be brought back to us at one point. And we'll see where that is. But to cancel this, I think, would be working against and creating new problems that we aren't ready to deal with at this moment in time. I'm going to echo a little bit of the sentiment shared by Supervisor Simon on those that don't have access to, not just the affluent pipeline, but any actual sewer itself that are still in septic, especially those that are living on the lakeshore where there's impact potentially on the lake, whether it's by accident or because of lack of maintenance. It would be great to make sure we take all of that away from the lakeside and into the proper infrastructure. So love the tertiary, love all those things. I think those are things that we need to stay focused on. I think that the affluent pipeline full circle was ahead of its time. And I think that we need to keep moving forward rather than stopping or going backwards. So thank you very much for bringing this to us. And with nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
I move that we approve the agreement between the County of Lake on behalf of Lake Coast Sand and Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for engineering and design service for the Full Circle Effluent Project Update to the 2004 preliminary, I'm sorry, 2004 Preliminary Design Report for an amount not to exceed $320,611 and no cents. And authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to skip around again. Are we looking at Rachel in the back? Are we ready for 7:15 or should we wait a little bit? Okay. Let's go ahead and start with 7:15. Addendum, consideration of patch payment on a public guardian conservator BB from general funds in an amount not to exceed $30,000 at $5,000 per month, continued from October 8, 2024, Board of Supervisors Agenda Item 7.6. And we have Director Dilman Parsons. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
If it's green, we're good.
All right. Good afternoon, Board and Chair Sabatier. We should have Carrie Holt from Fiscal in Zoom, if you could let her in the room, as well as Amy Shumansky, who is our Deputy Director over this program.
Both are in attendees and coming over.
Okay. Just in case we have any questions I can't address. So with BB, he is currently held in Lake County Jail. He is ready for release. He has served his time. But he is not able to live on his own. He's conserved with us in the PAPGPC program here at Lake County Social Services. And he also is a convicted sex offender. So it is difficult for us to find a placement for him. He does have Medi-Cal and Medicare up and running right now with an anticipated release date of November 1st. I believe we checked with 15 different facilities that accept Medi-Cal, yes. And they were not willing to take him. We checked 17 private pay facilities. And of those, one of them is willing to accept him for placement. That's Nazareth Classic Care in Napa. They're holding a place for him until November 1st. So if this is approved today, we would hope to quickly get him placed. This program doesn't receive any state or federal funding. It's fully county funds. And if the individual has their own estate, we use their estate to pay for their needs. In BB's case, he doesn't have an estate. We'll eventually have control of his social security and use that to assist in providing for his care. It's definitely not enough to pay for this placement. And the longer he is out of jail and in a placement, the more likely it is we'll be able to find him a Medi-Cal covered placement. So during the six-month transition period, we'll continue to work on trying to find someplace that accepts the medical coverage he has. That's what I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
On what basis is it more likely that they'll be placed? Because it sounds like a difficult placement right out the jail, but I can imagine it's going to be an easier placement even if he's out, based on, based on the conviction history, right?
Yeah, it's going to be difficult no matter what. And it's hard to say how long it will take us to place him because the two examples we attached, they passed before we were actually able to place them. Those two individuals passed away before, before even having to place them. So we can't really say. It is going to be difficult to place him. Amy, if you're on the line and have anything you want to throw in there, you're welcome to.
Hi. Hi, can you see me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, everything that Rachel said is true. It will be difficult to place him. However, we have difficulty with all of our conservatives when they're in jail simply due to the fact that there are limited placements in the state. And a lot of places will consider the jail a safe place. So if they are in another facility where they can understand how they're doing in, well, not a public, but it, you know, a non-incarceration type arrangement, then they are sometimes more willing to work with us on moving them somewhere else. And so the sooner that they're out of jail, the, some opportunities will open for us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? It's not open for public right now. We'll open it up soon. What happens after 30,000?
Yes, what happens after 30,000? We would probably be back before your board, potentially, if we haven't been able to place him. Amy, do you have any thoughts on that? Or Carrie, do you have any thoughts on that?
Not especially. I don't have a direct answer for you. I just know that we have a better opportunity once he is out of the jail. And so we do have an extensive list of places. As you are aware, we reached out to those that are sometimes a little bit more lenient with us. There are places that are off the list simply because of their proximity to a school or other places where someone with his background cannot be placed. But we won't be stopping. We'll be continuing to look until, until we have found something.
And then because they're conserved, are we, like, our hands are tied at that point? We have to continue with the placement where they are? And so we, we can't move them anywhere else because there's no other facility that's available to take them? And so the 30,000 continues without us being able to make any changes? We're, we're kind of stuck in that program?
We're stuck having to have someplace for them, yes. Hopefully we could find a place that accepts Medi-Cal or Medicare, but there's no guarantee of that.
And I know that we just reopened their Medi-Cal. And actually, in the memo, it stated that it could only be reactivated once we knew the final day. But it sounds like that may have changed as long as we're using the November.
Right, presuming he's going to be released November 1st.
Right.
But that wasn't a barrier to these facilities saying no. The barrier was the nature of his conviction.
I will say that once he's not in jail, it's also easier to be able to access his social security, which, as Rachel had mentioned, will help pay towards some of his fees. So I would like to think that even if we had to extend placement in this particular facility, that we would need less at that point. And again, we're going to be continuing to find, look for a place for him to go.
Right. I mean, the alternative is leaving him in jail, which is not great. And I'm not sure the judge would be very happy with that.
No, it's not the right, appropriate. I'm sure it's actually more expensive to remain in jail than it is to go to this facility. I, I feel this is a very sensitive subject matter. But what I would ask, if there's consensus, is at least every three months, let us, let us know what the update is, just on the location status. No need for specifics any further than that. But just so that we're in the know, because I'm worried about the 30,000 becoming more and becoming more. And then we're stuck and there's nothing we can do about it.
Right, absolutely.
That, that, I'm, yeah, I feel stuck between a rock and a hard place. But I think this is probably the better option and I can't limit it because nothing can be changed anyways once they're in.
Right, absolutely. We'd be happy to bring those reports to you.
Is that okay with everyone, just to get like a email update and let us know how general funds are being utilized to continue to?
I think an email update is probably fine.
Okay.
Looks like we have consensus on that. Let's go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yeah, just, you probably explained this, but I just want to hopefully reiterate it. So if, like, let's say hypothetically, there was no approval of this, this person would stay in jail? And that's the alternative?
We don't have any other thing to do with them, yes.
Which, like you said, would be more burdensome. Okay.
It's not the environment conducive to the care that this individual needs.
Correct. And I also believe it's probably more expensive for the county in the long run.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Sir, you had a comment? Please come up to the microphone. Absolutely. And you have three minutes. If we can please get your name.
My name is Wesley Otten, and I just happened to walk in and hear what was going on. And my concerns are, is how many times has he been in the past convicted of something like this? And if it's one time, yeah, something happens, people get stuff misconstrued. But if it's multiple times and we have to worry about this guy coming out and endangering our children or our wives or our sisters or our daughters, that keeping him in jail for that extra money might be worth it. Because that's my feeling about it, to have him out on the streets or be able to just walk away from some facility at any given moment. Is it a guarded facility? Is it, is it, I mean, where, what's really happening? We can sit here and say this and this and this, but do we know the facts? Do you know the facts of his prior history?
Enough facts, yes.
Okay. And so is it one time? Is it two times? Is it three times?
So I'm not going to get into that detail because I don't want to get into the details of who this individual is. Because I think the more facts we provide, the more we disclose the, what I would believe is HIPAA information as to why his name is even blacked out in the first place on the documents that we have. But this individual has paid their dues and the judge is requesting for us to help get him to the right facility, to get the right care. I believe this person has a lot of disabilities as well, which is one of the issues as to why at the jail, it's not the appropriate place. I share your concerns, but at the same time, we have to do what's best with the tax dollars that we have and what's best for our community and this individual. And right now, we do not have the best scenario whatsoever.
Okay, so that's all I want to know. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Appreciate your concern.
Any further comments from the public on this item? I see no hands in Zoom, no further hands up in the chamber, and bringing it back to the board.
So when do we start the clock running, upon the release and placement? Because I don't see a, I don't see a fiscal year, I don't see a date started, I don't see a contract.
It would be with a November 1 placement, would be month one. So November would be month one.
All right. And then the recommended action is not really in the form of a motion. But I can try to move to approve a $30,000 transfer from general funds to public conservator account for the patient known as BB to be used for monthly patch payments, not to exceed $5,000 per month for placement at Nazareth Classic Care, a private pay facility. And who signs that? Department head or the Chair?
Whoever has authority to move money from general funds.
County Council, help us out with that.
It would be the Chair of the Board.
And authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and do Item 7.14. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, adopt resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between Lake County Watershed Protection District, Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake, and Robinson Rancheria to execute the U.S. EPA 2024 through 2027 Environmental Information Exchange Network Grant. And we have with us Ms. Angela De Palma Dow.
Chair.
Vice Chair.
Yes, so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this. I'm just going to state first and foremost, or just before I, you know, step out, that there's no public benefit to me, or as a member of the Tribe of Robinson, or even sitting in a council position as Robinson Rancheria. In fact, I'm not even a signatory. The other thing about it is there's no, there's no contract with the signatory or MOU with the signatory on it or anything of the like. So I just wanted to just make that known. But again, because of the optics, I would rather just recuse myself, so.
Thank you very much. We'll let you know when we're done.
Thank you, thank you, Board, for having me today. Supervisor Puon's out of office. So I'll be taking on this item. And for a little background, this is Phase Two of a grant that was awarded to Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake and the Watershed Protection District. So the first phase was awarded in 2019. We're finishing up that project. We applied for the second phase and were awarded. And so now this is the MOU as a requirement of that grant, establishing the duties and the roles and responsibilities of carrying out that grant project between the tribes and Watershed Protection District. I did want to bring your attention, I believe the Habemetol Environmental Director, Daniela Cazares, is on the Zoom today too. And I wanted to express gratitude for Habemetol for partnering with us on this grant. It's not accessible to county governments, only to tribes. But they're great partners for working on environmental issues, water quality issues. And so we're really in debt and grateful to them for continuing this partnership on this project. And so what I did want to mention for this was that the resolution that was submitted in the package had some typos, some errors. So I wanted to point that out to the board before we move forward. I did provide a copy of this to Joanna, so she can bring it up and show to you guys. Oh, it did get added to the packet online?
It's been uploaded to the packet online, yeah.
Lickety split on those. That's okay. And I did discuss these corrections with County Council yesterday. So thank you, Lloyd, for your time on this, and he's aware of the corrections. The MOU itself is correct, just the resolution approving it and is, just has some errors that need to be corrected. So in the title, it specifies that the resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between Lake County Watershed Protection District and only Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake to execute the U.S. EPA 2024 to 2027 Environmental Information Exchange Network Grant. And this is for us to collect water quality, put it in public databases, and do other projects. The previous version specified this was an MOU between Habemetol and Robinson, and that is incorrect. So this is just an agreement between the district and the granted agency, the awarded agency, which is Habemetol. Habemetol will have a separate agreement with Robinson for their portion of this grant. In the fourth whereas, again, we just specify that it's with Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake, which is the, known as the tribe throughout this. And then in the seventh whereas, we describe a third partner, Robinson Rancheria, is working with us to distribute or split the funds of the four. The grant award amount was the $499,604. The portion for the district is 170 and 31. And then the be it resolved, we therefore clarified to approve to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the County of Lake Watershed Protection District and Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake. So those are all the corrections to that, for that resolution. The memo of understanding itself was correct and just lists Habemetol and the district. And with that, I'll take any questions, or if Daniela wants to add anything to that, too.
And so she's Daniela Santana?
Yes. It's, that's her. It's the same. Okay.
Good afternoon, Board, and Angela, I just want to echo what Angela said and the continued. partnership between the tribe and Lake County Watershed Protection District, it's not one agency that solves all the problems, so this grant is looking to expand upon what we've already built out in the past few years. I think 2019 was when we first started this project, and I was actually still with the county, so on the county side, I got to work under this grant. So by applying for the second iteration, we're hoping to expand and adding new partners like Robinson across the watershed to solve some of our problems that we have on the land here.
Thank you very much for that addition. And any comments or questions? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you, I'm trying to follow the bouncing ball. So I see the revised REZO, which is a Word doc, but in the Attachment B, I still see Robinson in there, so is that like a subcontract that's going to be let by the tribe, or, because I see the REZO, it clearly states it's going to be between the Watershed District and Habemetol, but I don't see, it looks like Robinson is still going to get work from this contract, as pointed out in Attachment B, but they're not a party to the revised resolution. So how does that work?
Yeah, Habemetol is the granted, the agency that was awarded the grant, and then basically they're just having MOUs between us, the district, a partner, and Robinson. Robinson will have its separate MOU, so we'll both be doing work under the grant and working together, and then we just, you know, submit our reports to Habemetol, and invoices to Habemetol get paid out, and they're the agency that gets the funds.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question? Yep, okay.
Supervisor Simon?
Just a comment, I want to thank Habemetol for working this agreement out, and also Water Resources and the tribes working together. Like you said, these are dollars that wouldn't come into the county without this opportunity, so collaboration, I know there's many more opportunities, and hopefully it continues to grow from the county and the tribal aspect, so thank you.
Any other comments? I know that, that part of the process is to keep adding those that are working on similar projects, and I know that Big Valley Rancheria has quite a large amount of data as well, and I'm hoping that in the near future, we'll see a combination of all our data mixed together so that we can work as collaboratively as possible. So I'm glad to see this, and hoping for further expansion in the future. Let's go ahead and open it up for any public comment. I see zero hands in the Zoom room, and no movement in the chamber. Bring it back to the Board for action.
Question the County Council as of the form of the motion, so on the recommended action on the staff report, there's still a reference to Robinson Rancheria, would I just strike that reference?
Yeah, so for the resolution, for purposes of approving the resolution, your Board may offer the resolution incorporating the revisions that staff outlined at today's discussion. And with that, with those revisions, the resolution being offered would now be titled "The Resolution to Approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between Lake County Watershed Protection District and Habemetol Pomo of Upper Lake to Execute U.S. EPA 2024 to 2027 Environmental Information Exchange Network Grant."
And that sounds like the resolution I'm going to offer.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sfatia?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Chair, just for further clarification, or also confirmation for your Board, because the memorandum of understanding, although the signature field is for the Water Resources Director to sign, and in accordance with the resolution, your Board may also consider approval of the memorandum of understanding for the shared execution of the U.S. EPA 2024-2027 Environmental Information Exchange Network Grant, and authorize the Director of Water Resources to sign.
Thank you, we would have had a resolution and not an MOU.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you, County Council.
And I see we have Lars at the back. Let's go ahead and continue with Item 7.3, Consideration of Upcoming Courthouse Facility And Public Services Director Lars Ewing, and Admin Staff Matthew Rothstein. Good afternoon.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, I will. Good afternoon, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Matthew Rothstein as well is here, and Stephen, Stephen Carter had a lot of involvement with this as well, so he, I was going to defer to him to speak, and unfortunately, he's not here, but happy to present. The purpose of the presentation today really is not normal for projects, but given the number of upcoming projects here in the courthouse, I thought it would be a good opportunity to update the Board, and allow the Board an opportunity, as always, to provide any direction to staff and input on the projects. There are a number of projects going on, and I'll list them here, and then we'll go into some, just a summary on each one. The first project will be, and really, well, the second project, but I'll state it first here, and that's renovation of the board chambers, that's really what drove the idea to come to your Board now. But also up for consideration is the fourth floor vacancy, the future, the anticipated fourth floor vacancy as a result of the new courthouse. Also, two other projects that are building-wide projects, one is an HVAC, Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Modernization Project, and the other is restroom renovations, or are, you know, multiple restroom renovations through the building. So all the projects are included in the county's facilities capital improvement plan, and on a side note, upcoming to the Board next month will be an update to that five-year facilities capital improvement plan for facilities, parks, and the landfill. So if it, if the Board is okay with me summarizing each project and then coming back for questions at the end, a lot of the projects have some interrelatedness, and we might answer some questions as we go along, so. The first project is the, really, not our project right now, but it's the state's, and that is the new courthouse that is under construction. The anticipated completion for that is mid-2026, so about a little under two years away. That information is coming from the courts, as well as the AOC at the state level. And we do anticipate, and they do anticipate, relocation of the fourth floor to occur not long after that. So that leaves about a year and a half to two years for what we're going to call space planning, or what is called space planning. So the plan of action was, and still is, for the, for Public Services, Admin, and the Space Committee to lead that effort, to address a variety of questions that are actually listed in the Board memo just as examples, but really to identify what is the plan of action that we want to take, as well as address the domino effect of vacancies that follow that. Of note also is that the county must purchase the state's equity rights in the building, that is spelled out in the joint occupancy agreement that the county has with the state, and an appraisal is planned to that, to that end, with the state leading that effort in 2025, so we've been in touch with the AOC on that. So the next, the next project that I'll quickly summarize is the proposed renovation of your board chambers. And at the Board's direction, we have begun a modernization project for remodel here, really at a conceptual level. Really, Public Services has hired an architect, and Admin has been representing the county as a stakeholder, but because this is a, you know, the, the board's chambers were here, that's, that's why we felt it was a good opportunity to come to your Board to get some, some input. The focus on that project, the modernization project, but specifically functionality, technology, access, acoustics, aesthetics, the list could go on and on. We do have some renderings of the two concepts, options, that Johanna, if you could put those up, I'd appreciate that. So we have two, two options, and, you know, these are, at this point, to provide a sense of, sense of what has been worked on, they are not, they are not the final design, in fact, we're showing two, because it could be, you know, a combination of these options, or could take a different, a different approach entirely. What I'd like to do, Johanna, if you just kind of go through each slide just to give a sense, you know, maybe slowly, just to go through, to give a sense for the Board of what we're looking at achieving. The two options, the first, the main difference is the, the front area has a slightly different layout of furniture, and the ceiling is, in this image, it shows kind of a standard T-bar ceiling with lights, and the second option, you can go ahead, Johanna, the second option shows a little bit more of a, more architectural ceiling, and as well as walls, so. Idea is updating, refreshing, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting the Board's intent, and achieving, achieving your needs. You know, when we get down to, you know, pretty pictures are great, but when we get down to logistics, okay, what is, what is the cost, right? That's what everyone would want to know. The average, well, I shouldn't say an average, the range of these options is between $650,000 to $750,000, that's, that's the estimate. The, the funding that we have in the current budget is $250,000, so obviously, there's a, there's a gap there. We have some opportunities for value engineering, primarily with the ceiling options that I mentioned, selection of building materials, you can see in these images, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wood, to put it simplistically, and that can, that can run up the cost, especially if we're talking about millwork that's specialty, you know, fabricated, not, not just something that is, that is shipped here and we kind of pull off the shelf. So there's opportunities to value engineer that down, but we do, we would like to move forward, we can, we can certainly receive and hope to receive some input from your Board, but the anticipation is to move forward with design. And also, just for your Board's awareness, Admin has been looking at alternative meeting locations, and that's something that is certainly of consideration for this, for this project, because the timing of the project, you know, will not just be an overnight project, obviously, this would be a, needing to take up the, take up this space and complete construction. So moving on to the last two projects, first one is HVAC modernization. The current system for, for this building is dated, it is, it is challenging, it presents challenges, it's operational, but it certainly is challenging. Currently, the building has separate heating and cooling systems. The proposed system, and I won't go into the, into the technical details of the current system, nor the proposed, but suffice it to say that the proposed system that we have currently in design is a, is an updated system. It will allow for, for more adaptability, it'll allow for both heating and cooling in separate areas of the building, so we're not, we're not reliant on heating or cooling only, and additional zones. We can heat and cool at a, at a more refined level, space-wise, certain areas. The, it will also be electric, all-electric, and that's important when we start talking about our solar arrays that is, should go into construction in a matter of a few months. As I mentioned, the engineering design is underway, it does assume the fourth floor occupancy, that, it is adaptable to that, but, but the idea is that the, the county, if we do take over the, the fourth floor, that we would design the system so that it includes that. Currently, the, the fourth floor, the courts run their own cooling system, and theirs is, is very dated in comparison to ours, our cooling system is actually not as, it's only about five, six years old. The heating system, however, is dated, it is the original boiler from the 1968 courthouse construction that we have kept, kept operating. The distribution system of the facility is, is original, with a lot of exceptions, where we have, have modified it over the years for, for renovation projects. The estimate of that, of the project is, is a little over $2 million. Funding-wise, we have a little under $2 million, so we are, we're going to move ahead with design, hopefully we can, we can value engineer some out, but also pull from our building reserve to ensure that we can complete that project. And the last project to touch on, really just to note it, it really would, would not be something that we would commonly come to your Board for, and that is the restrooms, so restroom renovations courthouse-wide. It's been in the works for some time, and it's really included here, not to go into detail, but rather for your Board's general awareness, and to ensure that the scheduling of those renovations would or could occur in conjunction with the other projects, so that we're minimizing disruptions. So in closing, unless Admin cares to add anything, I just, you know, there is no specific Board action requested here, but as I mentioned earlier, I certainly welcome, we certainly welcome your Board's input, any direction to staff, and happy to answer any questions from here.
Thank you very much. Anything from Admin?
Have anything further to add, but we definitely appreciate and rely on your Board's direction.
All right, thank you very much. Open it up for comments or questions. Supervisor Simon?
No, I appreciate the update, Lars, you know, obviously, the Space Committee's always having conversations. I think the ultimate goal, you know, when we started some of the conversations early on, is the Board of trying to have a one-stop shop for building, planning, you know, I don't know if we can fit it all in the building here, but as the space becomes available, that's something we've been talking about, getting environment, because you got to go up for planning up here, and then you got to go to environmental health through your sewer, you know, you got all these things, so having those opportunities in the future for the county and its constituents, I think is real important. I think, you know, everything you show up there is nice, I'm not a furniture picture guy, but the, updating the hall in here would be really nice, and adding some electronics. We all walk around with these iPads, and we need to see something in the desks, at each of the chairs, going your way, I guess, with the computer, those are just some small things, but really using the space critically to get a one-stop-shop type thing for our contractors and people building and doing projects, eventually with the use of the space, depending if it's in this building, or when the armory is done, other buildings come available, so just how the space is used for the long-term success in helping our constituents. So that's it, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Supervisor Pisca?
And knowing that this building has seen a lot in 60 years, and we need to make some investments to move us along into the next 60 years, and that's hard to do all at once, so I think it's important to do it incrementally, and strategically too, which is, sounds like that's what you're working on.
We are, and I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to complement the buildings and ground staff for, for keeping, not just keeping the building what it, what it was in 1968, but, but updating it over time, and I'll extend that beyond buildings and grounds to IT, and anyone else that has, has their hands on this building. We're constantly changing, technologies change, IT probably more than, more than any, so, so kudos to Shane and his team for constantly staying up with it, but, but on the buildings and ground side, you know, every time a new wall goes up, that changes the airflow, just to simplify it, that changes the lighting scheme, and so we're talking about more than just changing a floor plan, it adjusts, it has impacts that, that are broader-reaching than we may think, so with, as many, we have staff who have taken down the same walls that they put up, so it's, it is, credit goes to them for keeping it the way it is.
Yeah, I see mirror and nodding, like, your office, there's some offices that get really hot, and some that stay really cold.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, I enjoyed the chamber's views, but I got to ask some questions, again, new kid on the block, I'm almost off the board, but to me, it's almost the invitation to do space analysis for the fourth floor, to me, triggers a larger inquiry to, you know, do we have prior Board direction, that this courthouse, all 50, 60 years of it is going to be our forever home as a county administrative center, and even if there were that prior buy-in, I'd probably question that prior direction at this point, because there's some things not on this improvement list that I would definitely want to ask questions, one. One, when you build a city on a hill, it looks great, and you get great views of the lake, but it is inherently disadvantageous to people with disabilities that want to access this building. I don't know the current state of seismic safety analysis, or whether we're exactly where we need to be, or if that's something we're, we're going to either be required to take a fresh look at in the near future, or can anticipate that as this building continues to age, seismic safety standards will be a concern. Elevators, no elevators in here, the two we have are inadequate, to add a third elevator that does meet ADA standards could be cost prohibitive, nonetheless, we have to make the ask. So without sounding like I'm raining on the parade of what's been brought forward, and I know the Board gave direction to bring this forward, to me, the longer-term picture is the suitability of this particular building as the forever home for county admin, or even if we say it's going to be the forever home for certain county functions, I don't know, absent that bigger history lesson, that this is the building to go all-in on our county administrative services for the next 50 years. So that may be a separate presentation for another day and a different Board, but... may be a separate presentation for another day and a different board, but I, even on the remodel here, before I go three-quarters of a million dollars to remodel this, it's a small room. I would probably want a bigger room, you know. So those are just some comments, and don't have to be immediately responsive to any of them, but I appreciate the update. But what I'm looking for are subjects that you haven't raised in your presentation.
Yeah, and and the the purpose of the of the presentation was limited to these four. We absolutely have many other projects going on, this building and and external to it. You know, I I certainly can't answer most of your questions, to be perfectly honest. We do not have a, you know, a master, a master planning document that that guides, you know, county government facility use, aside from the facilities capital improvement plan that that guides the the individual buildings or individual projects. But i- is this the vision for for your board? You know, I that's a that's a question for your board, and if if there's direction to staff to to investigate that, the the fourth-floor vacancy might be a good opportunity to to look at that. We do have some time here. So as a part of of that space planning effort, I would suggest and recommend that that we do incorporate some some visioning to that end.
Other questions or comments? Vice Chair?
Just in agreement with, you know, moving forward and being strategic about it, because there's some things that are looming that are going to take place, and so it's best to have a plan to move forward with it. So in the HVAC, obviously, I know we all come in here one day, and it's hot, and one day it's cold, and yeah. So, you know, not to mention the restrooms, they're, again, sixties were a different time.
Got avocado green still going on in there.
I like that, but no, no, but I just just wanted to, you know, just echo a strategic approach.
So I appreciate you bringing this, and I believe, if I remember the date correctly, it's around twenty twenty-six, maybe mid-twenty twenty-six, that the overall courthouse should be concluded and things starting to move in or completed to move in?
That's the the date that I was provided by the by the project.
Give or take, depending on what bumps in the road that they find. I do agree that we need to have a greater conversation about what will happen with the fourth floor. Also, I think a budget conversation where we're now going to be paying for everything within this courthouse, because that makes has some impacts to us. I know that you spoke about the HVAC and the restrooms. Those are all things that not just are good things for our staff, but also for the community members that come in here, the the general public. They all need to have a friendly environment to encounter and engage with. So yes, I do know that, are the pipes involved with any of the HVAC work or things like that? Because I know that needs to be looked at as well.
Depending upon which pipes you're you're referring to, the the distribution system for the HVAC ductwork, essentially, as well as any any, call them drain lines, condensate lines for for cooling, that would be incorporated in there. Any plumbing lines, not, that is not a part of this, as far as that that system. But but the distribution system would be entirely entirely new. What's up there right now is adequate, but it's it's aging, that's for sure.
And I just think it's perfect timing with the solar panels going in. What can we connect together to help reduce the overall cost of energy? I think we have a very large space committee conversation that we need to have. You're working on the armory. There is the future movement of the sheriff's department going out to the armory. That's another vacant building. What do we do with that building? I think I think we need to have, and I think the space committee is the perfect opportunity for that, since that's already set up for that type of conversation. But we need to know way before twenty twenty-six, what is expected to be done on the fourth floor and for who and why, so that we can have things designed and ready to go. I I love the design or the opportunity to make this place look better here in the chamber. However, I sure hope we use grant funding for that and not any general funds, just because I would, I I would prefer to have impact on the public, general public. This is very minute amount of time and space during the full week's worth of engagement with the public. So I would prefer using general funds for other things. So hopefully, we can find other people's money to be able to pay for that, rather than having to dig into our own pockets. Now, everything else is is good, but lots more conversations to be had.
Supervisor Simon, did you have something to add?
No, you just mentioned something. So I know USDA, community facility grants and other things like that, definitely going to be opportunities down the road, hopefully. Putting that out there for Ben to start looking at, so.
If I.
Speaking of other people's money, I just wanted to reiterate and ensure whoever's listening in, that other people's money, which being the state, is paying for the courthouse, the other courthouse, right?
Right, right.
I just want to make sure that that's emphasized, because there's a lot of misunderstandings that we've decided to pay for that and as a county, and we have not. It's the state paying for that. So just wanted to iterate that.
And and on that note, it's a good good opportunity to point out the the current funding, what the the current agreement with the the state for the courthouse is both a cost-sharing and a cost-paying by the county. So I can't, I can't tell you the exact numbers if it's a net zero, but we, they cost-share with us. The courts pay for their shared portion, but we also have to pay the state quarterly, I believe. So I don't know if it's if it's a net zero, more or less, but but it, there is a, there's a shared cost-paying that goes along there. Now, it'll be nice to to own the building and not have an occupant that up on the fourth floor that that are judges. I'll just, I'll say that. But we have done, a good number, and I say that just from having gone through the roofing projects on on top, right? That's that that was a great project to have done, but when when we're answering to a to a third party and and not just the, you know, your your staff, it it does present challenges.
Right, right. And I just had to look it up real quick to be correct. Eighty-three million dollars is what the state is putting into the new courthouse, which is what I'm thinking about as you're talking, Supervisor Green, about, is this the future home? It is currently. Maybe in the future, that might change, but at this moment in time, we have to use what we have. We have to finish the armory before we start thinking about what's potentially going to be the next after the courthouse. And at this moment, I think the projects you have will give longevity to the courthouse until we have have a greater need.
Any other comments?
I'm just going to slide one in, last one. I know I had this conversation with Susan. We have a deficit in childcare providers in the county, and we have families who work for the county of Lake. As we start swapping around who's who and who's where in the old sheriff's department, who's where in the fourth floor, if there's an an area that opens up that's conducive to childcare facility, so that our employees can have access to that, I think that would be an opportunity to discuss and bring back at least.
Great. Okay, and we do have a a space committee meeting coming up for review of the the facilities capital improvement plan. So that that space committee meeting will will now be growing a bit with the with our topics, for sure.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? It's very calm today. No hands in the Zoom room, nobody moving in the chamber, bringing it back, and was just a presentation with direction. I believe you.
We're good. Okay, thank you.
We're good. Use the space committee, I believe, was the direction for what our future vision is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item seven point four, consideration and discussion of an agreement with AMPM Consulting LLC for departmental and county-wide capital improvement planning services for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and authorize the chair to sign. Mr. Rickelman, welcome back.
Thank you.
Micro. Yes. Is it green?
It is green.
Keep talking, I'm sure Sam will get you. When I'm, when I'm down, push it.
A push button. It's right there. Good afternoon, Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer, here with proposed planning contract regarding capital improvements. So keeping on that theme. So the county issued an RFP to look at how we can have an overall vision with capital planning and work with individual departments, too. It would definitely be building off the facilities improvement plan and the work Glenn and Public Works is doing with their ten-year CIP, and then also the work Robyn's doing now with special districts. So it'd be a collaborative effort. AMPM, this is their specialty, is working with local governments and other entities on capital planning. How can you be more efficient and effective with your capital planning, and then how does it relate to strategic planning? So this is their general kind of one hundred and eighty-day implementation timeframe, and we, the initial process is working with the departments on figuring out metrics, and how do you score these projects for prioritization? So then you can think through funding and strategic planning, and thinking through also what are the constraints? So that's at the departmental level, and then at the county level, they would be combined. And a lot of local governments operate this way with capital planning. Some take a five-year timeframe, some do a six, some do a ten. Some are locked in with available funding, and some are more of a a planning framework, where it's not necessarily a budgetary lock-in. So we would initially, this would be a planning mechanism. And Kevin, if you want to provide any more comments kind of on the timeframe and overall vision, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, you're doing great, Ben. I was just going to let you run with it. Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to visit with you. As Ben said, my name's Kevin Corwin with AMPM Consulting, and yeah, we're very excited about this project and the opportunity to help you all implement a strategic capital improvement plan countywide, and as Ben said, a department-wide. And so, so yeah, this is our general, these are the general stages of the project that we've identified. And there's, I think there's a few more slides on each one of these. And then this is the the general timelines that we've outlined for each of those stages.
Yeah, and this is just going into a bit more detail, the initial work with the departments in, so figuring out metrics, and then the modeling that goes with that. We'd also be working with the treasurer, tax collector, and administration with different financial scenarios. So just thinking through kind of, you know, is kind of the baseline, and then if there's funding opportunities out there, debt service, and so this is just different scenarios and how it would impact capital spending.
Yeah, so the the initial effort will be, you know, sitting down with the departments and, you know, kind of learning what their process is internally of identifying projects. Obviously, Public Services has a, already has a five-year CIP that they work through and work on on a routine basis, and bringing that, the same idea to the other departments, and then also, you know, doing high-level planning. So what we what we want to try to accomplish is, can we get, again, high-level scope, schedule, costs, and benefits of every, not every active project even, but every potential project? And then, and then we want to talk through ideas on metrics, you know. Well, how are we going to determine what the benefit, from a quantitative standpoint, what the benefit of every project is? And so, and that's a, that's a lot of what the initial, initial formation is going to be is, you know, well, let's identify what potential projects are out there.
Next slide. So I've touched on this a bit, but when thinking through all these projects, identifying time range, and then the revenue levels and funding sources, and then optimization is a big part of this. And so thinking through, since we've identified all these projects, how do we rank them, considering cost, timing, difficulty, and benefits? And that will be county-wide effort.
Yeah, so we'll set up, we'll set up scenarios, and what we want to look at in each of the scenarios is, you know, we can vary the time ranges that we're looking at. We can vary, you know, the revenue levels and the periods for those revenue levels. You know, we can run scenarios with ten million dollars per year, or twenty million dollars per year, you know, whatever is appropriate, and we can sort of do sensitivity tests of, well, what what gives us, you know, what's what's achievable potentially? And that's a lot of what we're working with the the treasurer and tax, tax collection department will be about, is identifying, well, what are those funding source options? What are the, you know, sort of ranges of levels that could be achieved from all of those funding sources? And then there's always going to be critical projects, so that critical projects list, I always throw that in, because there's always going to be, you know, certain projects when you run these scenarios, like, hey, this project, no matter what, I mean, it, we got a grant, it has to start by this date, or it has to finish by this date. And so we can put those constraints in as well, and run scenarios with with those options.
Excellent. So a critical part of this, I'll use that word again, is engagement with the community and within the county government itself. So kind of halfway through this process, when we have a lot of the projects reports and a decent handle on the overall project, engaging with the community regarding metrics, scorecards, and funding sources, and then talking through scenario constraints and targets, so we can get that critical feedback and then incorporate it into the final work product.
And we'll, we'll do our level best to, you know, engagement is something you want to do throughout development of a CIP. And so as we develop, you know, sort of a first-round of scenarios, well, then we can seek feedback on those scenarios, and then we can go back. And that's why the, I love the word refinement, you know, on that previous slide, that's a lot of the refining process of then tweaking the scenario and then seeing what the output is. Maybe we need to think about a metric that we didn't identify, and we can incorporate that metric. And how is, how is that metric going to be measured, and what are the, what are the data sources we're going to use for certain metrics? And so those are all things that we can get input on throughout the process.
InScope is project planning software, so this gives a view on individual projects, but then you can also scope out and look at kind of entire flow of capital projects here, and how the metrics impact the rankings and delivery schedules. Is there anything else you want to add, Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the the iron triangles, it's called, or sometimes referred to in project management on the right. I mean, that's really what we, what the product is focused on, is just trying to create a simple product wherever, or project, a simple platform where all the departments, all the projects get structured the same way. Again, what we're interested in is, hey, what's the scope? What's the work that needs to be done? What's the schedule timeline that's going to be kept? What are the estimated costs for all the projects? And then what are the quantified estimated benefits for the project? So if we have all those in one spot, in one place, then we can leverage that data. That's the data that we leverage in order to run scenarios.
Excellent. Do you want to speak to kind of these two tables here, Kevin?
Yeah, this is just, it's just a very simple illustration for the, you know, this idea behind optimization. You know, for a long time, I mean, I think the process of developing CIPs, and I've worked, and I did it myself, worked on, I've worked on many CIPs, I was a city engineer for a long time, and, you know, you generally, you come up with a way of ranking projects and then estimate those costs, and, you know, you sort of go from a worst-first or best-first sort of approach, whichever you, whichever you use. You can use cost-benefit ratios. I mean, all kinds of different ways that, you know, people have come up with to prioritize projects over time. The only problem is... The only problem is, you can get into situations, like in this example here, sort of the traditional approach on top. You got all these projects, you start with the best or the worst one first. You do the projects. Well, you could run out of money or you could just not do as much projects. And if you think in terms of total benefit, that's what that very bottom row is supposed to illustrate. You know, if you've ranked these projects, hey, these are the quantified benefits of the projects. You got a rolling total benefit that you're achieving with each project and each dollar that's invested. Well, if we let the computer do the work of that and do the analysis of that, you know, the computer could come up with a different sort of arrangement, taking into account the time factor as well and how long it takes and when, not just how much is going to be spent, but when is it going to be spent? And so, maybe it's better to do 250 projects versus a 1, 100 project sort of thing. And so, that's what the computer analysis is designed to do, is look at all the possible configurations of all the projects and all the benefits and what gives us the optimum arrangement of a CIP. You know, what gives us the greatest benefit in the shortest amount of time for the dollars that we have available? And so, for example, in this simplified example, you know, on the table below, you actually achieve, you actually get more projects done and a higher benefit, higher aggregate benefit in your program than you do with just a more, you know, scoring, worst or best scoring basis approach. So, that's the idea behind, you know, using, using a computer to optimize this capital improvement program.
So, this is from the City of Austin's Strategic Capital Improvement Plan. And what they're doing is overlaying different city priorities with also capital plan, capital investments. So, I'm not saying Lake County would look exactly like this, but the idea is with our general plan upcoming and other board initiatives, doing some sort of geospatial analysis would be really useful, especially with kind of this longer-range CIP planning and the complications of our utility districts here and all the issues we face in Lake County with wildfire risk and other issues.
And we can use that general plan, we can use output from the general plan to inform the metrics. And that would be the, that would be the goal, is to identify, you know, the metrics factors that, from the general plan, that, that helped to influence the prioritization.
Kevin, do you want to speak on this GIS map a little bit?
Yeah, and this, this is an example from prior work that we've done. This is from the City of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. And, and, you know, that's the unique thing about capital projects is they, of course, facilities projects happen inside a facility, as we know, but most capital projects, if we're talking infrastructure, you know, they, they have a spatial component. I mean, they take place on physical sites and spaces. And so, one thing, really, just about every client I've worked with now that we've done is we've incorporated, we've connected, you know, the idea of project management and spatial management, you know, reflecting a project and a capital investment within the spatial context, within a map context, you know, so that, and, and this is a great tool to communicate to your public, to communicate to potential, real or potential stakeholders, just for yourselves as well, just to know what's going on and what the status of projects are, being able to visualize it on a map. You know, it's a lot easier than, many times, than reading a document. And there's just such great GIS tools out there now. And you can render projects in different ways. And you can feed data, you can integrate data back and forth. And so, that's the idea behind this, is use this as really a stakeholder engagement, public engagement tool. And then, and then ongoing, not just for the development of the CIP, but then ongoing to, you know, report, report out what's, what progress is being made on the CIP. The other thing I'll mention, too, about the GIS aspect, when you, and I was so happy to see Lake County go ahead and incorporate the GIS services into this because we use that, we can use that for the metrics. So, we can actually, depending on the data sources, you know, we can use GIS analysis to establish and calculate, you know, what the metric is, once we establish a project footprint. And I'll just give you one example, you know, anything that's based on the American census. And, you know, perhaps you want the number of individuals with disabilities within a certain, within a certain radius, you know, of a, of a project or potential project. And that, you know, that is a quantifiable metric that you can use and then incorporate that into your scorecard, which incorporates it into the prioritization process. So, just, just very cool things that you can do with GIS now.
So, a great thing about this project, too, is it has a lot of applications outside of direct government operations. So, I was kind of talking about a complicated utility situation. And this could be a tool to help speak to outside investors and kind of explain the status quo and also what the potential pipeline is, going after state and federal funding. This won't, you know, make something ready for pre-construction application, but it'll get the wheel turning and it'll get us, I think, much better prepared to act on funding opportunities, at least site selection. So, explaining in conjunction kind of with zoning, what are the capacities, what's coming, that's always useful for them, especially the visual elements. When I've worked with site selectors in the past, the quicker they can have the information, the easier it is to digest, the more likely they are going to stay with you and follow up. And then, also a great tool for, it could be a great tool for strategic planning for outside organizations. You know, we now have the foundation here. And thinking through the county's long-range capital spending could really be a positive impact on their thinking. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Paeska.
Well, we are just in strategic, strategic planning mode across the board. And I think it's important that we're leveraging all of our plans and coordinating all of the work so that we can get products that will help us attract investment and manage our assets. So, I, I think this is great. So, thanks, thanks for putting this together, Ben.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just on the strategic side. And also, there's reference to debt financing and stuff like that. So, just like commented on the last item, you got to reexamine past assumptions pretty aggressively. This, this contract would be a great, great time and place to at least kick a couple tires on, you know, because how you finance projects and what, what little wizzy wig tools you do to forecast those needs is one thing, but the vision thing is on us, it's on this board, it's on this community. So, before they go too deep down these various rabbit holes and talk about things like debt financing in particular, being able to bake in a fresh examination somehow of our own capital needs to help inform this contract as it proceeds would be cool. And I don't know if that's space committee or some other type of thing, but this, this contract basically reinforces a point. We've got to be bold and some things, we definitely want to examine all the strategic things we can to get these capital projects moving. We may also question the need to proceed in certain directions. And that would give us cost savings and the ability to maybe even avoid debt financing some things. So, I love this, going to support it. But, but to me, it's a good opportunity to, to raise some of those questions.
Thank you very much. This reminds me of a conversation I had with Cao Parker before she was Cao Parker in my office about a comprehensive plan. And I think we're getting there. This is not the complete package, but piece by piece, we are putting it together. And I, I was happy to see the connection to GIS. I hope that there's some very public-facing documents that are easy to find. Supervisor Paeska mentioned it, for investors. We want people to see what we're planning to do so they know where to invest their dollars appropriately so that it's going to be the best return on investment as they can make. So, I, I think that it's important to have that GIS concept. Anything else that can be provided to ensure that there's easy access to understanding? And, and I hope that we can show that not only is it our strategic plan for the future, but here's what it was in the past two years and that we've accomplished the things that were on our list to get done so that that can lead to a level of trust from investors that what is being planned is going to get done. And, and that takes fine-tuning of our plan to ensure it's not a pie in the sky type of plan. It's, it's very feet on the ground. This is something we can accomplish because we have access to the funds. So, I'm looking forward to this. I think this is great. I believe we were looking at about a six-month timeframe from signing today to potentially this being completed. And that's a decent timeline, in my opinion, and looking forward to the final product.
Sounds great. And yes, we, we can incorporate with the counties delivered in the last few years. And as part of the work product, there is going to be an outward-facing GIS-driven site that will have kind of a narrative element. And then, we'll also have an internal site for kind of project management.
Yeah, that's very good, very excited. Anything further? Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes, so I notified the Central Region Town Hall last night that this would be on the agenda. There was a citizen that had asked, as we were talking about collaboration, I think it was the Glen Haven Fire and that whole situation where everyone came together. And someone said, "Well, it would be nice to see the county do that." And I said, "Well, this is a step towards that." So, so, yeah, I think it's a great thing.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the agreement with AMPM Consulting LLC for an amount not to exceed $157,950 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for bringing this. So, we are going to take a brief pause and go into closed session. And then, we will be coming out of closed session and coming back to our open session. The item that we will take up in closed session will be our 3:00 PM item, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Appointment of Animal Control Director. And with that, we will go into closed session.
...
Yeah, so I had help from staff to put this letter together along with a member from the Cobb Area Council who is a pilot. There is an uptick on traffic in the Cobb area in South County. There's a runway that lines up exactly with the top of Cobb Mountain. And so the flights come directly over our community. And we are, we sit at a higher altitude. And so when the planes are coming and going, flying at a plateau and then dramatically going up and down and taking their engines up and down, it has increased a lot of the noise over the area. So because Sonoma County Airport is going through some approach studies and had a comment period open, I'm submitting this letter. I'm requesting that we submit this letter from our board so that we can go on record as making these requests to be a good neighbor. I would say, I think that, I mean, I know the airport is actually in Supervisor Gore's district, so we can either send it to him or the whole board. But this is the letter that is pretty technical. It's been vetted by our other experienced flyer, Ray. He's also a local pilot and said everything here is absolutely spot-on technically.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just some process questions. So I know there's some comment period open on STS. I don't know if the comments are supposed to be directed to the Board of Supervisors. So just a question as to that comment process. I thought the comment period had closed as far as this particular aspect of the runway. And then not being a pilot, not having the technical background on the vector adherence, part of the statement here is that it will keep air traffic further north of us over lesser populated areas. Of course, directly north of Cobb would be Big Valley, Kelseyville, Lakeport, and stuff like that. So absent having any maps or any full understanding of if we're going to push them in a different direction from Cobb, that necessarily involves those planes getting routed to locations elsewhere in the county potentially. So I'm not opposed to sending a letter, but I just don't understand enough about this. And I'm not super comfortable about the stricter vector adherence that would route potentially air traffic away from the Cobb area, but possibly routed elsewhere in the county.
Well, the airport is pretty much directly on the other side of Cobb Mountain. So it is very close in proximity to the airport and also at high elevation. So if you change the vector, by the time the planes got over any community, the communities would be at a lower altitude and the plane would be at a higher altitude. So I don't think that you would realize any impact. But this is just, the airport doesn't have any, they don't, once the airplane leaves the airport, there's no jurisdiction. So this is encouraging pilots to be friendly, adhere to friendly neighbor procedures. So that's all this is really requesting. And all, anything that the airport can do is request pilots to do this. So I have had conversations with Supervisor Gore. He knows this letter is coming. The comment period did close last Friday, but we didn't have enough meetings to get this done. So he knows that this is on, this on its way and expecting, he's expecting it. So don't have to worry about the comment period being closed.
And I think we can always send letters to our colleagues to let them know our thoughts so that they can incorporate that as they move forward in their studies and their decision-making process. I do have a question for you. Obviously, the technical knowledge needed for this is beyond me, so I'm not going to question any of that. Is this enough? Is there a future ask maybe that will come back at a later time? Or is just this letter simply enough to at least make our statement and see what they do with it?
Yeah, this is enough because they don't have jurisdiction, really. But what the planes, it's easy, sometimes pilots prefer to do this plateauing and then up and down, and then they have to turn their engines up higher and, you know, so they're just trying to train all of the pilots around the airport because they're getting complaints all around Sonoma County about this. And so if they just consistently fly straight up or straight down, then there's less noise impact. So they've been gathering comments and I listened to the comment period, or I listened to the presentations and all the comments. And, you know, this, I think that we just do this.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do much else.
And I don't think that what we're asking is moving the burden from one to another. As you stated, Cobb is at a high elevation. Maybe there's sparse population in the mountains in the north or the south, but in comparison, it will not be anything close to what it is at the, for the Cobb community. So I'm okay with what's being requested. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a need for more to ensure that we're heard. Anything else? Supervisor Trump?
My only follow-up question because I support sending the letter. Should we send it to Congressman Thompson's office since it's the FAA, a federal agency that kind of controls the airports? Just a question. Just a copy of it or a CCM on our letter? I don't know. I just wanted to ask a question. Because it is a federal agency, right? The FAA controls the airports. Just, I just thought of that right now, so.
I like the suggestion. I don't think it would hurt to do so. As far as you made a suggestion to both Supervisor, whose district it is, as well as Supervisor Hopkins, I would say yes to both as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, it's fine. I don't know if it's necessary, but I'm not opposed to it.
Anything else? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak? I can't find Zoom on this item. Please raise your hand in Zoom. Get up in the board chamber. And seeing none of the above, I'm bringing it back to the board for action.
Okay, I move that we approve the letter to STS and authorize the chair to sign.
With the additional CCs?
As, well, I'm sorry. It amended to the letter should go to Supervisor Gore. It could CC Supervisor Hopkins and CC Mike Thompson's, Congressman Thompson's office.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for bringing that. Next, we have 7.5. CAO Parker, are we ready for that one? Okay. Consideration of an update to the CalCard Program Policies and Procedures Manual. And we have Casey Moreno, who I assume will be doing this.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Casey Moreno, Deputy County Master Officer for Finance and Budget. So we have a CalCard policy which has not been updated since 2000. As you can imagine, there's been a few changes, different programmatic terms that are updated, guides, various things like that. So we worked with the Otter's Office. Actually, it's been about a year and a half, almost two-year process. It was going on before I came to Admin. And so there are a lot of changes in there, but most of it is, the bones are still there and are still relevant. It's just references of where people can find these documents or what the program-specific roles are that are reflected, such as the billing department is the Otter's Office. And so we have changed those around to reflect their common name. We have also uploaded, or sorry, updated some forms with those document names. There was a lot of R002, various terms like that. They're referring to forms that we couldn't even find. So they have been long gone, so those are updated now. We also approved, removed the approving official responsibilities. A lot of those responsibilities were also repeated in the department head tasks. And so we just removed that section and moved some of those relevant tasks down to the department head task, as well as the approving official for the purchasing agent. A new section that we added in with strong consultation by the Otter's Office is the compliance section. So if a cardholder does not follow the policies, then we can take steps to revoke their CalCard. And there are a few grammatical errors. So on page three of the clean copy draft, the second bullet point states depart head, should say department Ted. And on page four of the clean copy, specifically excluded purchases, it says cardholder guide. It should say cardholder guidebook. And then also would like to change in that same sentence where it says, County of Lake CalCard may not be used. We would like to change that to shall not be used. Any questions?
All right. Sorry, I was thinking of our last conversation. I did not expect that to change to shall. I thought that was going to stay as may, but that's, that is what it is. Any questions or comments? You talk more. All right. I just want to bring up something, and I appreciate the correspondence regarding this policy update. So I was reviewing all of the different CalCards. And directors have different amounts of maximums or maximum per use. I see some managers and supervisors even have more. It just seems very random. And I'm not sure, I just wanted to put it out there. Does there need to be some limitations within positions saying director has a maximum allowable use to this? Because it just looked really like, it just looked very subjective as to who could get what. And it was very different throughout. There was no consistency with positions or consistency with amounts or maximum amounts. I just kind of wanted to bring that up and see how that works at this moment in time.
So there are quite a few departments that have much larger amounts, but they'll have maybe one or two CalCards for the whole department. Sheriff's Office, for example, they purchase a lot of items online. And that's how most of the CalCards are used, is online purchases. And so they have, I believe, just two CalCards for the entire department, including the jail. And so when they need to order in bulk, they put it on the card. There's other departments who have like a one-time purchase that they need to make that is a little bit higher or higher for their single use, single purchase limit. So then we will, if they email us, we just need an email from the department head saying, please increase it to this. We increase it for that one-time need, and then we decrease it back down.
Okay. And I know that we just went through the process with the purchasing ordinance to kind of increase because things cost more money. Is that something that you're seeing across the board where people are asking for a larger maximum amount on their CalCards because things cost more money?
I just want to bring up something and I appreciate the correspondence regarding this policy update. So I was reviewing all of the different CalCards and directors have different amounts of maximums or maximum per use. I see some managers and supervisors even have more. It just seems very random and I'm not sure. I just wanted to put it out there. Does there need to be some limitations within positions saying director has a maximum allowable use to this? Because it just looked really like, it just looked very subjective as to who could get what. And it was very different throughout. There was no consistency with positions or consistency with amounts or maximum amounts. I just kind of wanted to bring that up and see how that works at this moment in time.
So there are quite a few departments that have much larger amounts, but they'll have maybe one or two CalCards for the whole department. Sheriff's Office, for example, they purchase a lot of items online and that's how most of the CalCards are used, is online purchases. And so they have, I believe, just two CalCards for the entire department, including the jail. And so when they need to order in bulk, they put it on the card. There's other departments who have like a one-time purchase that they need to make that is a little bit higher or higher for their single use, single purchase limit. So then we will, if they email us, we just need an email from the department head saying, please increase it to this. We increase it for that one-time need and then we decrease it back down.
Okay. And I know that we just went through the process with the purchasing ordinance to kind of increase because things cost more money. Is that something that you're seeing across the board where people are asking for a larger maximum amount on their CalCards because things cost more money?
Not, not too much. The amounts are pretty similar to what they were before the purchasing ordinance was updated. It just kind of depends, towards the end of the fiscal year, a lot of departments will make larger purchases to make sure that they count towards that fiscal year. And then around this time, they kind of taper off a bit. So it just depends on each department individually.
Appreciate, and again, appreciate all the information you provided me. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, super quick question, bottom page two. Do not wait for your statement to come in the mail. So there seems to be in a system called access online where CalCard spending is tracked and approved and so on and so forth. So I just, is that a thing? And then are department heads and any other people holding on the CalCards fully up to speed on that system? Is that the go-to? I found it a little interesting. There's probably some online portal where most of this is supposed to happen, just like when they're approving time cards. I wasn't aware we were still doing statements to come in the mail. Are those issued by the card company that issues the CalCards?
Yeah, so there is a statement that is generated around the 23rd, 24th of each month. And so you can view it online or you can wait for it to come in the mail. Since we pay it all as one payment from the Otter's Office, the statement looks like a normal credit card statement, but it says do not pay this amount because you reconcile it and send it to the auditor. But those are available online and we have, between Admin and the Otter's Office, have made huge pushes for departments to get their access online, access. It is called access. And so once you sign up for a new CalCard, that information is automatically sent to you. Some of the older ones might not have gotten that or if they haven't logged in, so we can reset that.
So if we have one or two people of a certain age who maybe are not or up to speed on access online, should we be baking in a requirement that we go paperless just to keep second floor happy? Or, you know, I don't want somebody who's comfortable getting the statement in the mail to either trip up over this because of a sudden reliance on access online only? Or can they continue to leverage the mail statements?
So they can still use the mail statements, but they get them around the very end of the month and they're due by the fifth. So it gives them a much shorter turnaround time. Whereas if they look it up online on the 23rd, 24th, that gives them a lot longer time to reconcile all the information and find the receipts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think if we have struggles in accessing an online portal for this, that's the least of our struggles as a whole. So I think that's the way, what we should be doing it, so. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see no hands in Zoom and no one moving at all in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board for action.
I heard a couple typos in there. So if I move to approve the revised CalCard Program Policies and Procedures as amended, would that work?
Second.
I believe the answer to that question is yes. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to skip a little further. Let's go ahead and do seven. What makes sense for the right order? Yeah, let's just take seven. I apologize for the question. Do we have? Do we need Mr. Gearhart to be here for the item of 7.6? I know we have Pam Samick here.
I recommend it.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and skip that, but it's all kind of interrelated. Let's do 7.9 just to see what happens. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointments. Emergency Medical Care Committee. We have one identified application. First five Lake County, one as well. And Spring Valley CSA number two, one as well. And I'll just put all three right now up for discussion. Is there any discussion on any of the applications received?
Just for the board's information, we're continuing to work on a second set of bylaws amendments for Emergency Medical Care Committee. We, this appointment is for an alternate. So the primary seat category is for a representative of Sutter Lakeside. It was Mr. Stevens. And Najia Siddique is proposed here to be appointed as the alternate. The bylaws kind of say they get to choose their own alternate. The primary member, in terms of process, we still want to get those alternates to apply, fill out the form, sign the code of conduct and bring it to the board for their approval as the alternate.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comment on any of the applications? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. One application per committee identified. And no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bring it back, one motion per committee.
Move to approve Najia Siddique as the alternate representative for Sutter Lakeside Hospital on the Emergency Medical Care Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Move to approve Fon Rave to the first five Lake Commission. Says member at large, but I think there's a tribal representative on there category. I don't have it in front of me though. Let me see. It just says Commissioner.
Would say go with what's there.
I don't think it's nat large though. I can probably find out really quick.
Can I go to the other one?
Yeah, so I'll go. Oh, you want me to do the other one?
Yeah.
Withdraw the previous motion.
So I will go ahead and move to appoint Joe Wells as the CSA two, to that advisory committee.
I can.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
And Johanna, I don't have time. Do we have categories on that one?
She's just being reappointed as member at large, but we have her as education director. So I think it's just member at large.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Move to approve Fon Rave, first five commission as a member at large.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Let's go ahead and do our calendars. Yes?
Mr. Gearhart is on Zoom.
Oh, he's on Zoom. Thank you very much. Wasn't looking at that. All right, so let's go ahead and take up item 7.6. Sitting as the Air Quality Management District Board of Directors. Consideration of a resolution authorizing hiring incentives and differential ad pay for the Lake County Air Quality Management District staff in response to critical hiring and staffing issues in Lake County's Air Quality Management District. And we have Pam Samick from Human Resources and Doug Gearhart, Director of Air Quality with us. Not sure who wants to start it off. Unless CAO Parker wants to take this one.
Pam Samick, Director of HR. We are asking to adopt a resolution authorizing hiring incentives and differential ad pay to the Lake County Management Air District in response to staffing issues with the Lake County Air Quality District. Due to severe staffing shortages impacting the Lake County Air Management District, staff recommends implementing a temporary increased incentive program that would increase the incentives to $20,000 for up to four air quality management engineer positions with a total cost not to exceed $80,000. This is a temporary hiring incentive program that will end after four employees have received the hiring incentive or June 30th of 2025, whichever occurs first. Any person accepting the hiring incentive will have to agree to remain, to stay employed with the county for up to two years. The payout is as follows. $10,000 following 30 days from their initial appointment, $5,000 after the first year of employment and $5,000 after the second year of employment. In addition, due to the complex geothermal engineering duties in the Lake County Air Management District, we recommend adding ad pay to the following classifications. 5% for Engineer 1, 10% for Engineer 2 and Senior, and 10% for the Air Pollution Control Officer and the Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer. The cost of this program is outlined. Total estimated cost is $53,871.28. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Gearhart, Director Gearhart, did you want to add anything to this?
At this point, no. I think Pam covered everything for me, so I think unless you have questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, you just said total estimated cost $53K, but on the first page, if there's four engineers and $20K. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a differential pay. My bad. Thank you.
All right. So just some brief comments and I apologize for throwing a wrench in the wheel. I know I had a conversation with Ms. Samick yesterday. Unfortunately, sleeping on it changed my mind. Moving forward with this for me is difficult in the sense that I really feel that it would need a tentative agreement or a signed agreement by the union. We are approving a resolution that would also approve the meet and confer to happen with that union. And I just think it's the wrong order of operations. Without mixing too many other items, because there's kind of three items that are interrelated here and untimed items that we have to take up this afternoon. We have in our hiring incentive policy that we cannot exceed $10,000. It doesn't say unless authorized by the Board of Supervisors. It doesn't have any of that language in there. So I would say that in the past, when we have done that, we've done that without following our policy or our ordinance that we have regarding hiring incentives. The hiring incentive is also capped at $10,000 for directors. And here we are increasing it without having yet utilized the $10,000 to see if that would incentivize greater applicant pool. Right now, we're jumping from no incentive to a higher incentive. And so those are my concerns. My one concern, I will be abstaining from this vote because I don't feel this is the right order of operations. We need to include our unions in the conversation prior to bringing this to public. I feel we are negotiating in public. And two, if this does move forward, I would prefer it move forward with $10,000 incentive to start with to see how that impacts the applicant pool. And also I would request consensus. There has potential implications to a other contract that we have with Mendocino County where the pay is based off of the Lake County pay. Here, there's differential pay and so on. And I would like for that to come back for us to review what the implications are and looking for consensus from the board on that.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's one of the things I was going to actually ask. Considering this, how many times did we go out for recruitment? Can anyone answer?
Once, once in 2023 and once in 2024. And we, we have increased incentives via resolution in another department. So that seems like it was the mechanism for that. But if, if we're wanting to change that resolution or update the policy, either way, we can get direction.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand right now they're having a struggle with staffing. And I understand that it's probably played a hindrance to being able to post or recruit. So, yeah, I was thinking about the Mendocino County collaboration or any other agencies that maybe they'd be collaborating with. Because I know that there's been some situations where they are so limited and overwhelmed and overburdened that they aren't taking on a lot of different things. So I just want to kind of know if there's other options to collaborate or something of the like while they're waiting for these things, if they get passed, to take place to help with business as usual, if that makes sense.
And just to clarify, agreeance to coming back at a later time to review the Mendocino contract to see what implications this may have on that or further discussions regarding it? Is there another, is there consensus to that? I'll take that as a no. Okay? Any further comments Supervisor Green?
Yeah, so on the differentials, I struggle because if you're an engineer in Lake County and you have geothermal, I don't know if it's a differential because you don't have different classes of employees and the higher levels doing the differential work. So, but to your point as to the order, I do believe meet and confer should have happened before this item come into us. And I'm not going to abstain on that. I'll definitely vote no on that basis alone. As to the size of the hiring incentives being over what our other departments are doing, that perked my ears up too. And you're right, one or two failed recruitments in the past two years doesn't necessarily prove the point that we need to go over the standard $10K to get to $20K. Although these are engineering jobs and I think there's justification there, but there wasn't process preceding the ask for the $20K. So I won't be supporting this today. Good effort. I certainly appreciate every reasonable effort to bring our Air Quality Management District up to full staffing, but there's a, got to be a method to that, so.
Any other comments Supervisor Sam?
So the $20,000, I thought that was done in another case.
We did it for.
Women.
Jail, female deputy.
Yeah, so this board did that.
Yeah.
So I was just confused by that comment of we never bound over the $20,000. We've done that.
We did it using, we did it using a resolution previously, which is kind of why we mirrored this request this way. So we, we have done it and the board is allowed to adopt a resolution to do this? And Lloyd, can you speak to the fact that we, we can do a meet and confer after approval or prior to approval? Either way, is acceptable based on board direction?
So, so that is correct, the meet and confer. That's up to your board's discretion whether, on when it should occur. It, this issue here deals with matters within the scope of representation as defined in Government Code Section 3504, which relates to labor negotiations with public employee organizations because it includes matters related to, or including but not limited to wages, hours and other terms and conditions of employment. So your board has the option, as it always does. It is permissive to, to either deal with this matter, this presentation and for your board's action in an open session. Your board also has the option of taking this back for further discussions in closed session. The timing of the, of the meet and confer, as long as it occurs, you know, that is, that's the type of flexibility that, that your board would have and that's up to your board's determination. And part of the consideration there, as Director Samick has referenced, is, is, you know, prior instances in the past of how your board has approved similar types of, of actions via resolution. So in one scenario, if your board adopts this resolution, it would still be as part of the recommended action. There, you, there would be direction to staff to meet and confer, of course, in a scenario where as coming out of a, if as a result of the meet and confer, there is no, there is no agreement between the sides, the two sides. It would, at some point or other, in some form or other, come back. point or other, in some form or other, come back to your board for consideration. By then, there would be an adopted resolution, plenty of options on the table there on how to go about moving forward with that resolution under that scenario. So there's several options that your board can take here. As long as the meet and confer occurs, the sequence of that, it will be up to your board's discretion.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Just a quick question for Mr. Gerhart. Without any of this moving forward, what would, I think we talked, I think I had a discussion with, well, we had a discussion, and we mentioned how if there's not anything to continue forward, and eventually there's not enough reports being done and things like that, that the state could eventually be taking over this situation, or the department, if you will, or this whole.
Lose attainment.
Yeah, we would lose attainment, yeah.
Right. Yeah, the issue is if the state determines that we are not complying with Health and Safety Code and meeting our mandates to enforce the, you know, the State and Federal Clean Air Act, they can take over the district, and it's the district, not the department. They can take us over and operate us as a state entity, which would eliminate all local control. So there would be no local input, no local rules. It would, all the state requirements would be implemented. And there's a process, legal process for them to go through, but it's fairly simple for them to make that determination. So it hasn't happened in the past, but they have the option to do that, so. And there's a couple triggers that they could use, and one is monitoring and one is other mandates, so.
Would you say that we're close to that, or do you just, it's never been done, so we don't know? It's just a potential thing that could happen?
Yeah, it's unknown what would, you know, because the politics of it is probably the bigger issue than, you know, if the state could do it easily, they would probably have already done it. But the politics of state getting into local politics and stuff is a little more challenging for them. They don't like to do that, so they would, they will try and avoid that when possible. But yeah, we're at a point where they could do that at any point. They just, they really don't want to, and they don't want to get involved in local politics. So that's why we're still able to operate.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Pyska?
Well, it seems like the majority of you don't want to move forward with this, but it is critical that we figure out how to. So if this has to come back, it has to come back as soon as possible.
I just wanted to know about the question that you mentioned about Mendocino County.
Okay.
I didn't really say yes or no.
Oh, okay.
But I did want to know from Pam that if you would be willing to assist considering the, I guess you could say the lack of resources or whatever the case may be in the department, the urgency and whatnot with the district, I keep calling it a department, I apologize for that, but the district, to recruit and things of that.
Yes. HR is always happy to aid a department in recruitment. There needs to be some level of recruitment from the department head so that they recruit out to their networks and out to special groups, especially for engineers. But yes, I am happy to help in any way possible.
And if possible, is there, with other department heads or district or anything like that, how many times do they recruit or put or post for a position before?
For critical hires, they don't stop generally. If a recruitment fails, it either stays open continuously, or we reopen and we try different avenues, different advertisements. You just, you can't not post and hope somebody's going to show up to our door. You have to post. So we, you can't get good results if you're not posting.
Cap? Supervisor Green?
Just wanted to briefly comment on county councils. It sounds like there's enough wiggle room. We could meet and confer before or after the reso, but to me, despite that latitude and that flexibility, if we can clarify, if not today, somewhere down the road, that the preferred approach is to meet and confer before the reso comes, because otherwise, okay, I'm going to meet and confer in good faith. Well, we already passed the reso, so it's not quite a take it or leave it, but it's pretty close. I can't imagine a good faith conferring process that would say we'd like to go in a different direction, or say the union, just hypothetically, would say, we're not opposed to this, but we're opposed to 20K versus 10K because of this, this, that, and the other. So it's, to me, the superior default position would be meet and confer privately and then bring those resos forward after that process. But, you know, my colleagues may not agree with me, and clearly, the code gives us latitude to do it either way. But, you know, that's what I'm concerned about. Here's your brand new reso. Now we're going to go meet and confer and see what you guys think. Doesn't sound like the most.
In the five and a half years that I've been here, we have never meet and conferred first, unless it was a negotiation where you gave us standards, and then we went to the union because we were negotiating a contract. Most of our management policies, incentives, have all come to the board first because that's how we get our direction. And so if I developed a policy and took it to the unions without bringing it to you first, and then you didn't agree with it, or you didn't give me direction to do so, it, at least in the last five and a half years, that's the way we've done it, is direction first, then met with the unions. And also, in the last five and a half years with incentives, hiring, and other policies, they have never said, no, this is just out of line. It's always been an open conversation. And when you're talking about ad pay, they like anything that increases pay to our staff. So they're not likely to turn that down. But that's just giving you historical, at least in the last five and a half years, this is how we've done it. But we can do it any way you direct me.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Doug has his hand up.
Doug, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to add something real quick, just to clarify on the recruitment issue. It's more than just two failed recruitments in two years. So we had four staffing a year ago, you know, just over a year ago. We lost our technician to community development. And then in December, we ran an engineer recruitment. We hired in early 2024. That person did not last very long and left us. We did another recruitment, which was failed, and then we lost our engineer that was our current staff, our only engineer. So we've had four different people, well, four different basically attempts to keep staff here. So it's more than just two failed recruitments. It's two failed recruitments plus the loss of two staff at the same time, so. So I just wanted to clarify that it's a bigger issue than just a couple failed recruitments in the last 12 months.
Appreciate the clarification. All right, open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none in the chamber or Zoom, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Wait, are we sitting as directors right now?
We are sitting as Board of Directors.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
No.
Director Pyska?
Yes.
And Director Swatia?
Abstain.
All right.
Resolution passes. We're going to move on to the next item, which is consideration of, we're going to do 7-11 first. Consideration of resolution, amending resolution number 2024-100, establishing position allocations for fiscal year 2425, budget unit number 8799, Air Quality Management District. And we have both Ms. Samick and Director Gerhart. Who wants to take this one on?
I can. We are basically asking to add an air quality engineer two, so this classification would be engineer one slash two. It would be a flex classification to give them the maximum flexibility to hire somebody with zero experience or somebody with a couple of years' experience in addition to the senior engineer that they would like to hire.
Cap? Any comments or questions regarding that update? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No one in the Zoom room, no one in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Direct, we're directors, right? Are we the directors still?
Or back to Supervisor?
Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Yes.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatia?
Aye. Thank you. Then we're going to move on to item 710. Consideration of updated hiring incentive policy, human resource, I don't know why I'm reading the sponsors. Let's start with Ms. Samick.
Yes. Staff is recommending the following changes to our incentive policy is to take it to three payments, so 50% upon hire, 25% following the second, the first year, and 25% following the second year. This should make it easier for the auditor's office to not have to collect, spreading out the payments. We are asking to change the repayment to repayment on a prorated basis. And then we are asking to add the deputy public defender, and there was a typo here. It should be employment and training worker, not employment and eligibility. I merged two positions together, and resource planner to the hard-to-fill list.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding this item?
Just the pending meet and confer, so my vote will reflect that.
So my comment on this is a couple of comments. One, I don't like the fact that we have such a breakdown, and I get why it's there in the first place, because we did have different processes depending on positions. But now it's the same process for all the positions, and I would prefer we not reseparate those processes again. So I almost feel like we should just get rid of the department head recruits, the non-safety positions, and all of them say the general process is a maximum of $10,000 unless approved by Board of Supervisors to go above. That's not in there. I would like to see that in there, because it does say not to exceed 10,000. So even though we did pass a resolution in the past, it's in conflict with this policy that we have. And then all the rest has been changed to match, where it's 50% for the first six months, then 25% after 12 months, and 25% after two years. You must repay prorated, and all of the other stuff is the same. And I would prefer that we all combine it together so that it never reseparates. Different processes makes it confusing. We've learned a lot through this process, which is why we've come to using the same, or are looking to use the same process for everyone. So those are my comments on this item, other than the last revised date needs to be 10/22/2024.
Correct. And I would be happy to bring it back to you in a more consolidated fashion if we could pass this for now, so that we make it easier on the auditor's office and start the repayment schedule, both on a prorated basis and over two years. And then I'm happy to bring it back in a more consolidated fashion.
Okay. What I would still ask is for an amendment that says hiring incentive of 10% of the annual rate of pay not to exceed $10,000 unless approved otherwise by the Board of Supervisors, so that we can break that $10,000 barrier if we need to, and it would help us comply with the resolution that we just passed.
Yes. After my conversation with you, I did take an attempt to redevelop it and send it to Susan, so once she takes a peek at it, we'll bring it back in a more consolidated fashion. But we do have a number of positions that have automatic, that automatically qualify, and we have some positions that do not automatically qualify. They must meet the hard-to-fill, so we just need to define that out.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. I'll bring it back to the board. I am looking for any comments on my suggested change to the unless otherwise approved by the Board of Supervisors to go above the $10,000.
Where would that go?
Well, right now, it would go in three locations, where it says department head recruitments, pay not to exceed $10,000 unless otherwise approved by the Board of Supervisors, under non-safety positions, newly appointed employee not to exceed $10,000 unless approved by the Board of Supervisors, and under the deputy probation officer, where it says $10,000 hiring incentive unless approved by Board of Supervisors.
Is there a max stated in the deputy sheriff or the sheriff? I don't see a max in there. Wouldn't you extend that same change to the sheriff's positions?
I thought the sheriff's position.
They have, and I don't know where they're at in their resolution, they have a resolution authorizing special incentives, which is not part of this policy, just because I don't want to update the policy for special or temporary programs.
I would distinguish these garden variety incentives from the special programs. You want this policy to be applicable. If this policy is not applicable to the special programs, then what guidance do we get from that portion of the policy?
I don't know what you're asking. It's in the policy already, that the sheriff's department is also 10K not to, or 10% not to exceed 10K, or 10K, excuse me. So it's already in the policy, the current policy, and it'll be laid out in a much simpler way as we bring this back to the board, without changing it massively, just formatting.
Did you have your pen up, Supervisor Simon?
No, you guys are confusing me right now. So, so can we, so what you're asking is to add that in today. Lloyd, can we add that in today without any major changes or anything?
Yes, your board can make those additions, and the approval would just be to approve the policy as amended.
All right.
And that includes the revised date of 10/22/2024?
Yes.
Okay.
And also the employment and training worker.
And where is that?
It, I listed it as employment and eligibility worker. I merged two titles.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Did we already do public comment?
Yes, we did.
So moved, as stated by county council.
And just to, for further clarification, it would be to approve the updated hiring incentive policy as amended pending the meet and confer meeting with the unions.
That's what I heard.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. I believe that is everything except for our calendars. Did I miss anything? All right, let's go ahead and start with our weekly calendars. We'll start with Supervisor Green.
All right, looks like first five commissioned tomorrow, meeting in Lakeport this time. I see in the board chambers tomorrow from 5:30 to 7, 7:30, there'll be a workshop put on by Lake County Probation regarding community input regarding potential housing projects for justice-involved individuals. Looks like on the 28th, next Monday, I should have Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council, and other than that, it's going to be a spooky last week. But I don't have anything else on my calendar right now, so.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, moving through this week, did have the disaster council yesterday. I did want to do a plug for a couple of meetings we do have coming up. In Clear Lake, October 23rd, 5:30 to 7 PM at the City Hall of Clear Lake, there will be a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan put on by Lake County OES, the City of Clear Lake and the City of Lakeport. And then on the 24th, 5:30 to 7, at the Lakeport City Hall, it'll be the same meeting. So there's two meetings put on by Lake County OES for multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan projects. First time in the county's history that they're doing this, so looking for community input. And you can go also to the web And you can go also to the website at OES and get the information. So lakesheriff.com about OES HMP is one website, and then the Lake ABC wildfire evacuation and preparedness plan project is being hosted on the October 30th from 12 to 1 PM. You can get that information at lakeabc.orgprojects. All of these having to do with hazard mitigation plan updates and really just making our community safer as we move forward, so please join those meetings, just wanted to make the plug for that as we move forward. I did not make the risk reduction authority meeting, so Supervisor Pyska will give the update. I have the meeting today, Thursday, it looks like you have a Geysers Agreement Ad Hoc Committee meeting that's been scheduled, you know, for this week, and then there is no meeting next week, correct?
Right.
Looks like we have a facility CIP on Wednesday, the 30th, that was scheduled today, and back here on the 5th, and then obviously Halloween in between that time, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
We didn't have too much action at the RRA meeting, it was a lot of partner updates, which is good to hear, a lot of coming from the RCD and Fire Safety Council. Tomorrow, I have a tree mortality check-in with the resilience initiative, our chief meeting, OPR meeting, and then NTO in the afternoon here in Lakeport. Thursday is the RRA best-fits grant meeting, which I may or may not be able to get to, the Geysers Ad Hoc meeting, I might have to be zooming into that one, I'm not sure yet. And then the evening is the wildfire recovery photo voice research town hall, after two or three years of research, that's finally coming together. Friday is the Coal Creek Hitch monthly pre-planning meeting, tree mortality task force meeting, Kelseyville area plan community meeting, that's virtual, and my meeting with, on Monday, with CIO Parker, Tuesday, I have the all-day county preparedness engagement action and resilience meeting, PAIR, hosted by the RCD. Wednesday is the Cobb area meeting, that's virtual. Halloween insurance working group, Kelseyville area plan meeting.
Yep.
We have the rec agency meeting in the afternoon, which is at the, oh, that's just two of the same. You gonna be able to make that one, you think?
Next Thursday?
31st, yeah?
Zoom.
Zoom, okay. And then my CSAT class on the 1st, all day again, and then back the following week.
All right.
Vice Chair Crandall, thank you.
Yeah, I will first announce that this Saturday, there will be another Clash Against Trash in Laserna at the castle, it's all the same as before, Saturday, October 26th, 9:00 AM through 1:00 PM, 3700 Country Club Drive, and it'll be bulky items, e-waste and household garbage, no hazardous materials, it's the same thing we've done before. So October 26th, then it was presented at the town council last night in Central Region in Laserna. So the folks are passing these out as of now and getting ready for it this weekend. But also, there was another announcement about the Hallow Fest, the Vision of Hope Village presents a Hallow Fest, which is Saturday, October 26th, from 12 to 4. This group is a nonprofit that helps with folks that are on the spectrum, and so it's a really awesome event. I've been to a couple of their events, and it's always at the Nice Event Center, I think this one is too, yeah, Nice Event Center. So, so yeah, that, the meetings that we've already, that you've already mentioned, and back here the week after, so.
Thank you very much. Let's see, tomorrow, meeting with Greg Folsom, who's currently still the interim for Chamber of Commerce for Lake County. I do believe that his days are almost up, but we'll see if and when that happens. Meeting with our housing navigator from Lake County Continuum of Care, joining Citizens Caring for Clear Lake that afternoon, coming back to Lakeport for our first five commission meeting, joining Lake Fire Protection District, and I think I'm going to go to the probation RCHDC meeting, that'll be held here in the chambers at 5:30, and go to the hazardous mitigation meeting in Lakeport the following day, on Thursday. On that Thursday, starting off with judges breakfast, I think we're done with our candidates forum, we'll be moving on to other topics, starting off with the pick count from the Continuum of Care, Hope Rising meeting is happening that day, meeting with the jail medical staff for their third quarter MAC meeting, going back to City Hall, where Congressman Thompson will have USDA representatives there for rural development. Already talked about hazardous mitigation, meeting with PEG on Friday, I'm going to be going to Red Bud Library on Saturday, the 26th, a partner of one of our staff members who works at the library, Josh Price, has published his book, and I will be getting his signature and joining him at the library that day. Following week is fairly light, I will be joining Tribal Health for Halloween to judge their Halloween contest, working on our pick count. Again, our pick count will be January 23rd, 2025, we're finalizing the last of our organization for that, so you'll be hearing more, and meeting with our food policy, Blue Zones folks, and again, we have an extra meeting for Lake County Continuum of Care happening on Friday, the 1st, and then we'll be back on the 5th. And that's what I have for now, and that finishes all of our open session items. We will continue back into closed session for item 8.1, public employee discipline dismissal release, 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D1, FERC project number 77, Potter Valley hydroelectric project. And with that, we will be going into closed session, thank you for joining us today.